Good morning and welcome to a special user group where we're going to talk to you all about conversion. Or as I have typed several times, conversation, but conversion, conversation. They go hand in hand, and that's what we're here to talk to you specifically about today. If you've missed it in the introduction while we were chatting amongst ourselves, waiting for the meeting to officially kick off. I'm asking that unlike other user groups where you can ask your Q and A throughout the meeting. We're going to hold our questions until we get to our Q and A segment towards the end of today's session. We want to make sure that you take time to hear all of the information in its entirety. And then whatever questions you might have, we are going to use our Q and A feature available through the webinar to ask those great questions that we know you're going to have. And then we'll take those questions and we will put them into an FAQ or a frequently asked questions document that will be specific to today's topic about data conversion. So that will all be published on the transition newsroom and that will be published next week. So thank you so much for kind of adhering to that flow of today's meeting. We're going to have information shared through PC by Barb through PCR and then from PCR. And then we've got Shane that's going to jump in and talk through some information about the conversion. And then we have our panelists that will join us at the end to answer that Q and A. So without further ado, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Barb to get things kicked off. And I will also just be taking any general comments you have in the chat and monitoring that if you need anything from us at that time. All right, Barb, take it away.
All right, Kim, thank you. Good morning, everyone. And again, welcome, welcome to this special episode of The Buck. My name is Barb Lehman and I am your Policy Consulting and Review Director and happy to be with you guys today. So as Kim mentioned, today, we want to give you guys a first look at the conversion plan and talk through a couple of specific examples of what data will convert or be moved for you from the current Eva application to the new application. And what data will be moved to the long-term storage facility, or as we refer to it, the Eva data warehouse? And what data will just die like a requisition in composing status? We're not moving that, that will just die. So, you know, we want to know, we want you guys to know that we hear you and we understand. For those of us, and I am one, that have only known this set of procurement tools, transition and change is a scary thing. And I'm right there with you guys. I was one of the pilot or early adopter agencies when Eva Ema was first introduced in 2001. So this is major scary and I get it. I'm, I hear you right there. But it's also really exciting all at the same time. So our mission and our goal is transparency in public procurement activity and spend. And to that end, the decisions that our team has made about data conversion is all about data integrity and transparency. So look, we have plenty of time to coach you guys through this, make changes if warranted, and still keep to our schedule. We're breaking the ice with you guys today so that you can absorb it, discuss it with your folks internally. And if you think something different should be done globally or specifically with your organization, bring us a business case to consider and we will absolutely discuss it with you. Remember, we're focused on how things will work go live or day one. We're moving everyone all at once from what we're doing today to what we will do, you know, on day one of the new tools, once we go live. But remember, this platform is so robust and flexible, it's going to continue to evolve with us to meet your needs, to meet Commonwealth's needs, to meet DGS's needs. So don't worry, we're all in this together. Don't forget that. So, okay. So that's it for me for the moment anyway, and let's see what all this data talk is all about. Shane?
All right, Barb, thank you so much. Well said, all the way across the board. Good morning, Shane Caldwell, the Director of the Eva Program here with you. Really appreciate Barb's introduction. And as Kim mentioned, we've got a kind of an all-star panel coming back towards the end to help with questions and things like that. So let's get into this. Let's talk conversion. All right. So our agenda for today, outside of that fabulous introduction by Barb, going to go through the conversion timeline, going to talk about some terms that you're going to hear and start getting kicked around. We're going to talk about transaction prefixes and kind of the difference in prefixes you're going to see with some of our major transactions in the system. I'm going to go through some overview and resources. And then I'm going to get out of this presentation and I have what we're calling the transaction and data roadmap. And so this roadmap, it's a, it's a file I'm going to give to you guys. We're going to post it on the transition website. We're going to share it with you. And what it's basically going to do is it has the existing Eva module, the existing Eva transaction, the status, if it's going to convert or not, and then some notes to help provide detail. So as soon as this meeting's over, give us, give us a couple of hours. I'm going to get that over to our good friend Dave Foster. We're going to get this presentation posted, the video recording like we've always done. And then you're also going to have, as Tim mentioned, once we answer some of the questions and work through them, we'll have a specific conversion FAQ. And then we'll also have this roadmap for you. And again, I'm going to go over that today. So I'll actually jump out of this presentation and we'll go through this, this roadmap to give you, and it'll be a reference. And it could be a changing reference as we adjust or here are your business processes or things we need to make a change to. Or quite honestly, on our side, if we run into something on the conversion side and we need to make a switch, we'll make sure we do that. I have a funny feeling going forward, conversion will be a topic of discussion from here on out, right? Until we get to the end of this and then actually transition over into the, the next Eva platform. So, you know, this is the first of potentially many discussions, messages, fact sheets, updates to the roadmap that we're going to do. So again, I'm glad you guys are along for the ride. I'll probably say it 50 times today because Barb said it too. We're all in this together. So, so let's roll into here. Real quick, conversion timeline. I think you guys probably have a pretty good feel for this. It kind of flows for what we're doing with everything. Conversion is its own little world. So you got the software being developed, you got training being developed. You got the architecture standing up like where the environments are going to live and security and all that fun stuff. And then you got conversion. It's, it's its own little, little project plan, quite honestly. It's its own little bucket because it's critically important, right? But I don't think this should be a surprise to you if you're looking at the dates in the timeline. You know, back earlier in the summer, requirements were coming together. We're still kind of, you know, at the tail end of the design phase and some of the mappings. We're actually taking the different fields and starting to map them over. That stuff's being done. As we move into the fall, there'll be development going on to actually, you know, build the programming, to actually move the transactions and data or, you know, prepare ourselves for that conversion process to move the transactions and data. We'll do some testing, production will get prepped, and then we'll actually convert and cut over. All right, we will convert and cut over. So I'm going to get to the terms in just a minute when we talk about that. But the big date you see there, the target that we're shooting for, there might be a chance it's a week or two earlier. But we're just kind of saying December 31st, that weekend, that's when that's going to happen. And I've got some good news around that here on the next slide when we shift to some terms. So some of you might be on this call and be like, what's conversion? I don't even know what Shane's talking about. Well, conversion is the process of extracting transactions and data. And in this case, existing Eva. Converting, transforming those elements if we need to and loading them into our new platform, right? So that, so that a lot of your transactions and your data and your addresses, think of all those things that we have in our system. So that when that new system comes up, when we're ready on January 3rd for that to come up, that, that, you know, we can work, that we have the things we need in the system so that we can conduct procurements. All right. So that's conversion. That's, that's what we're talking about here. Cut over, that's the steps and process that are going to be taken to retire and deactivate the existing platform and launch the new platforms. You're going to hear the word cut over, cut over, cut over date, cut over timeframe, cut over date. You're going to hear that a lot. You're going to hear that a lot. Blackout or blackout period timeframe during cut over where there will be no Eva access or availability. And so you're going, oh dear, you know, blackout, what's that mean? I got good news for you there. Covered it in some slides, some subsequent slides, but I can break the ice with you on this one. We think our blackout period is going to be two, three days at most. So if you're looking at that New Year's holiday weekend, you know, the 31st kind of being our target date, probably take the environment, I believe that Thursday night, the 30th, you know, we take the environment that evening, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, we're blacked out, not going to be able to do anything. And then on the third, which is a Monday, you'll come in and the new system will be on its feet. So for something as massive as this is what we're doing, an enterprise system of the, the size and scale and scope of what Eva is, to have that small of a blackout period is pretty cool. Now, of course, that, that might adjust and things could change, but that's kind of sitting here in August. That's what we're thinking today. So those are just some terms you might hear conversion and cut over and blackout, blackout period. So just wanted you to do some level setting there. Before we dive into some overview and some resources and some other things that are happening, I wanted to talk prefixes real quick. Those of you that last week did the, were with us for the user group where we did the live demonstration, you might have picked up on some of these prefixes. I thought it was good to get it in a slide and get it recorded for posterity purposes. And certainly it's, it's a change as we change some of the prefixes and some of the, you know, how the numbering is done per se. You know, how a transaction is, is identified in the system. So I just did a quick thing, current new requisition in our current system is PR, new is REQ. A purchase order not tied to a P card, again, not tied to a P card. Right now, our current system is EP. In the new system, it'll just be PO. I think that's good, right? Purchase order instead of EP. I think that's great. Purchase card order remains the same, PCO will still be a PCO. Receipts, they are prefixed with RC in our existing environment. When we transition, REC is what receipts will be. Solicitations, quite honestly, how a solicitation is identified really isn't changing. It's going to have kind of the solicitation type IFB, RFP, whatever, then a dash and then a number, right? So there'll be some incremental number. That's really not changing when we move. You know, from a public posting perspective, what your supplier community sees, they're not going to really notice the difference in the numbering when that shifts over. And then contracts, right now, and I put department in quotes because our internal contract number that Eva creates for you, it does like your agency code, like ours is A194 for DGS. So it's A194 dash and then an incremental number. And that's how we do contract numbering right now. Contract numbers are going to change a little bit in the new system. And that number is going to drop some of the agency identifiers in the actual number. And it's going to be like CTR and then an incremental number. So, you know, if you think about from a reporting perspective, we're going to have to make sure the agency is clearly identified, the contract number, and there's a little bit, you know, contract has, has some nuance to it. Particularly on how that's recorded, but for a system contract, the system contract number that is generated by the new platform, it's going to be CTR. Okay. So just want to be clear about that. So those are some of those transaction prefixes. Moving into our overview, you know, kind of started, we're going to get into it now a little bit. Some overview and resources before we jump into the roadmap. Just some things I wanted to get down on a slide. And then I got the good news. I already shared the good news about the blackout period, right? I think that's a very short period of time that we're going to be blacked out and that that's on this slide. Worth repeating, but let me go through these bullet points with you. Okay. Some overview and resources. Barb mentioned this. Historical transactions that are not converted will be available for reporting and analytics via the Eva data warehouse and reporting resources. So our 20 years of history, orders that we haven't touched in a while, you know, that are, that are closed. They're not, they don't require any more change orders or contracts that have fully expired with no more renewal dates. Our business opportunities that have expired with, with no renewal dates. The data warehouse is still there. So your ability to pull up those historical POs, run reports, you know, do your fiscal year counts and spend and all those things, you're going to have that ability. That, that data is not disappearing from an analytical perspective. All right. What we're really talking about with conversion is the user interface, you know, where your end users are in and, and creating new orders and issuing business opportunities and all that fun stuff. That's what we're talking about with conversion, right? It's, it's what can the end user get to? You know, what transactions are sliding over, what data is coming over for us? So I hope that's a good news story there for you, you know, hey, you still got your transactions. You can still run PO reports on your own data. You can still look up those solicitations, get your SWAM counts, do your metrics and end of year spend reports and all that stuff on those historical transactions. That's still going to be available for you. I already mentioned this. I hinted it in the timeline above, but the conversion cut over target date is December 31st. So you're going to notice some other dates are kind of pointing to that when we talk about messaging or something happening. You know, really pointing to that December 31st date as our target. Already talked about the blackout period, three days. The plan is to have access restored Monday, January 3rd. You're going to be up and running. We're going to have a whole new system to play with and very exciting. You know, to have that date and to see that written down on paper and kind of recorded for posterity and going out to the masses. But there it is. Again, I think that's a good news story. Going forward to the best of our ability, we would really, really like to pause what we call reference data updates by December 1st of this year. All right. So again, I'm going to repeat that. Would really like to pause reference data updates by December 1st. So that's addresses, accounting, workflow, users. You know, we'd really like our best to pause that. Now, the reality of being able to pause for potentially 30 days, you know, we know that that might be that your first time that your eyes kind of went open and been like, oh my gosh, what if we get a grant that comes in and we need to place an order against a grant and we need to get it in? I think there's ways that we can work around that and make that happen. But again, that's really something we want to kind of do. Can we on December 1st really try to slow down the updates we're making in the existing system? So that we can do this, this massive conversion, right? So again, that's, that's, that's a date that we wanted to put forward with you. The conversion roadmap, that's what I talked about. We're going to, I'm going to walk you through that today. We may not go through every single line, but I'm going to kind of scroll through it to give you an idea what the roadmap looks like. It's, it's about eight pages, eight or nine pages worth of information. And again, it's exactly what it says it is. It's a roadmap. It's a reference for you that you can go back and say, okay, I've got a requisition in the existing Eva Ema. It's in this status. What's going to happen and why? All right. So we're trying to give you some perspective there and get that roadmap out to you. Again, I think that's going to be a living, breathing document for you guys. And I promise you, we're going to follow up after this meeting. We're going to get this recording posted. We're going to work on that FAQ for conversion, kind of specific to conversion because we know how important this is. And then we're going to have that roadmap out there for you as well that you can reference and be able to look at as, as you guys think about your business processes and the impacts of, of this conversion process as we move into the new system. All right, here we go. Some big ones that I wanted to point out to you. Ad hoc, non-registered suppliers, ad hoc, non-registered suppliers. We are moving to a system in our new platform where just we have to have our suppliers registered in some form or fashion. They need to be self-registered or state-entered and we need a full profile. That's the way this system works. It is not uncommon at all in procurement and financial systems to have a full vendor profile on record and that includes tax IDs, contact information, addresses, email addresses, phone numbers, right? What our registration profile looks like. It can be state-entered, it can be self-registered. Let me touch on some of these points because this is probably the first for some of you where there may be some shock and all. And that's okay. As Barb mentioned, this is an icebreaker today. Current Eva, in order to help us with the conversion, because imagine if I'm converting a requisition and an order with a non-registered vendor, I don't have anywhere to point that vendor to when I'm moving to the new system if they're not registered in some form or fashion in the system. It makes conversion very difficult because if I have X number of transactions and they don't have a vendor associated with them, I don't have anything to point them to. Because again, we're moving to a system that requires a full vendor profile, a full vendor registration. Again, self or state, still got this concept of doing a state-entered vendor. But that's what we're moving to. We are proposing and trying to set a date of in our current Eva, that October 15th, we would deactivate this option. After October 15th in current Eva, suppliers can still self-register or be state-entered right up until the cut over date, right up until the end of December. All right, we can still register suppliers. In the new Eva platform, you're like, why are you doing this to me? Well, I kind of mentioned, number one, we're moving to a platform that is the way they're modeled. It's, it's just the way they're modeled. And again, it is not uncommon in, in systems. And this is about improving data integrity, security, knowing who our customers are and having a profile, no matter how we're placing an order, no matter how we're paying them, that from a government perspective, we know who the vendor is, we have their tax ID information at all dollar values and levels. All right. So all suppliers must be registered self or state. Kind of hitting on that last bullet there, suppliers are available for order immediately after approval and activation. There's no delay. We also think there is a more straight line process on the end user side for getting a vendor state-entered. I know right now it's a little bit of a chore because you've got to have access to, like basically it's a vendor self-service administrative module and then you got to key that data in and submit it. There's a little bit longer approval process because there is some overnight syncing that has to be done in our existing environment. We know that's not the greatest thing in the world. But in the new platform, we feel like the, the vendor management components, getting a full vendor profile loaded, even if it's on the state side is much easier. There is also some options to encourage and do campaigns to get vendors to take ownership of their account that are, you can run out of the system. Again, this certainly may be a pain point for everyone. We're breaking the ice on this and we wanted to talk openly and honestly with you about that today. And, and this is kind of the, the plan that we're putting forward. All right. So that's ad hoc, non-registered suppliers. All right. Here's the next one. VBO buyer, and you see the word deactivation. Now, this is, I need to be crystal clear because there's some confusion here sometimes. This is not about our supplier or public facing business opportunity site. And quite honestly, guys, that is going to still be called because it's, our suppliers kind of connect to it. Virginia Business Opportunities. And you'll sometimes hear us say the All Opportunities page, right? All Opportunities are the public posting site or Virginia Business Opportunities. That's remaining in place. And quite honestly, if you go out to Eva right now and go to Business Opportunities and, and All Opportunities or we call it VBO, what you see is what you get. That's coming with us. So that look, that feel for the supplier community, quite honestly, if you talk about change management, there's no changes for the supplier community. On January 3rd of 2022, they can go over to Eva, hit business opportunities and it's going to look the same to them as far as finding and searching for an opportunity. However, on our side, on the Eva side, on the government side, on the buyer side, however you want to look at it, we're making this thing go away. I've, for those of you that have attended the forums, you know, I've talked about this quite honestly for years. And right, wrong or indifferent, shame on us. Much like the non-registered vendor, ad hoc vendor process, shame on us. We probably should have gone through the change process 10 years ago, a decade ago, to get you all the entities and everybody off of these two processes. So shame on us. But this is a change. We are moving again into an environment where the sourcing tools are fully integrated with everything in the system. You know, so fully integrated sourcing tools. We are, and I know you haven't seen the first lick of training on these except for some live demos last week. We are incredibly confident that there are some paths on the sourcing side. You're going to find it intuitive. I, I hope that it's going to introduce some functionality to you that you're going to like, including electronic response. And, and we're delighted to shift everyone into the, on January 3rd, into Eva sourcing tools that are a fully integrated situation. And also the sourcing tool can kind of stand alone, even in the new environment. You can complete your sourcing there. We know there's lots of you that are not under our purview that use separate contract management tools and things like that. You know, those abilities are, are still there. You know, you kind of can do your sourcing and do your awarding within the sourcing tool. And, and, and you have some options there. But again, we're delighted to move you guys to this. We think it's going to be easy to learn. We think you're going to like it. We think it's going to introduce functionality for you. But this is a big change. So let me actually work through some bullets here. We are going to deactivate VBO buyer in our current environment for all users December 1st. So we really need you guys to be looking at your, you know, what your business opportunities are going to be like, what type of soliciting and procurements you need to do. And, and kind of having that December 1st date in mind when it comes to VBO buyer. Now, on the flip side, Quick Quote and Sourcing and Contracting will be available pretty much. There's a couple of caveats, but pretty much right up until the cut over date, right? Particularly sourcing and contract will be available right up until the cut over date. Particularly if you have something you just have to get on the street and you just have to get at it, get it out there and get it posted even through our transition period. But again, we want to start getting these dates in your mind or there's solicitations you can hold as you get closer to the end of the year. There's something you can do a little earlier to get it finished. Those are why we want to be talking to you here in August. So you guys can plan appropriately as you move towards this transition and cut over date. The third bullet, let's talk about that because I talked about how excited I am to get you in electronic responses. Then I'm going, oh, hey, electronic responses are going to be paused 60 days before the cut over date. Now, again, for those of you that are using sourcing and contracting, that doesn't mean you can't issue solicitations. You're just going to have to take paper responses and let me explain. In order for a system, remember the definition I had above. In order to do a conversion, I've got to take the data, transform it and load it into the new system, right? For our sealed electronic responses, if we get to the conversion slash cut over date and I have sealed, sealed responses in order to convert them, even if the procurement is still open, I've got to open the responses, do the conversion and transformation and then load it into the new system. So what have I just done? I put the procurement at risk, right? I have opened sealed responses before the close date, before the public bid opening day. So in order to avoid that, and we know this is going to be some work from you guys because you're going to have to do paper responses for a while. We're going to move you to paper responses until we cut the system over. And then you can either enter the paper responses into the new system, you know, just some business process things to work out how you want to do that. Or we want to try to finish everything up and get our, our business opportunities, our solicitations evaluated and awarded before we cut over. Right? Get those paper responses entered, you know, get everything done, get everything wrapped up and moved. But that, that's kind of what we're thinking from an electronic response perspective. So kind of a tough thing for us to put out saying, hey, we really, oh, we're so excited about electronic responses. Then we're saying, whoa, we're going to have to pause that for a while. But again, the explanation for that is protecting the procurement process. The explanation for that is protecting the procurement process. I, or we. What's this I stuff, right? We cannot convert sealed electronic responses, cause we have to break them open. To convert them, right? I have to get to the data. So we'd have to open the lockbox, put the procurement at risk. You know, do the conversion and then you, I've opened up all these bids and then I'm, I'm moving them to a new system. That's bad. That doesn't look good, that, that doesn't hold up ethically. So that's why, you know, we're kind of putting these dates in front. In the new platform, all sourcing tools, including quick quote are available in that fully integrated sourcing module. So very excited about that. So you're in one integrated sourcing module, whether you're doing a quick quote or. An IFB, an RFP, a government to government posting, an emergency assault source, whatever it is, fully integrated toolset, very excited about that. And in the new tool, electronic and paper response options will be available. So from a conversion perspective, if you had to issue a, a solicitation and that solicitation needs to convert. And it's open from the old, the new system and you're collecting paper responses, when you come up in the new system, you can take those paper responses and enter them in the new system. Right? Enter them once we convert. So again. I know those two slides are a lot to take in, those are biggies. Ad hoc, non-registered vendor option going away will not be available in the new environment. So we're trying to get those business processes changed now. VBO buyer deactivation. December first, VBO buyer, again, buyer, the things we see, not what the supplier sees, not the public posting, that's. All the sourcing we do is gonna still go to our public posting site and it's gonna send notices and all those great things we do. Now and track swam and, and all that awesome stuff that we do. It's the buyer component, we're moving everybody who has sourcing responsibilities. Into one consolidated, fully integrated sourcing tool. Alright, so now I am going to stop sharing very quickly and I'm, I'm shifting over the roadmap, okay? I'm gonna shift over to a roadmap or walk through that for a few minutes. So bear with me. I'm gonna stop sharing, you're gonna see some, some beautiful faces there and then I'm going to reshare. This roadmap. Give that a beat. For everything to load up. So this is, it's just, I just did it in a PDF. Uh, got it nice and blown up for you here. Again, this is what we'll leave behind as a reference for you guys. And I just wanna scroll through, um. The roadmap here real quick. So real quick, at the top, you've got the Eva module. The transaction or data element. It's status. Yes or no, if we're converting it or not, and some comments around, alright, about, about what we're doing. Alright, so I, you know, I, I'm not gonna read every one of these. I think some big ones, Bo, Barb touched on it. Email requisitions that are in composing, you need to, you need to get those submitted. Alright, anything that's composing, that's not in process, it's not moving down the line. We're getting rid of it. Alright, so, um, you know, get those things submitted. Uh, before we, before we cut over and I've got the date in there, December thirty-first. And you're able to do work in the email right up to the cut over date. So we'll, we'll even narrow those downs and be very clear about when the environment's going away. As we get closer to the thirty-first, but again, very short window. I think that's a good news story. It's not everything's shocking all today, right? There's some positives. Staying in a Reba email requisition, you see a lot of yeses. So requisitions that are submitted, yes. Requisitions, oh, sorry, I bumped too quick. Sorry, I don't wanna make guys, you guys dizzy. I, I blew this up on my screen, so hopefully it's big for you guys. So. I apologize. Order canceled, receiving received, coming over, coming over. A big key here. For things that are converting. We are looking for, in this case, when it's kind of in a more final status and you see purchase and rec here. Last modified date of the transaction falls within the last two calendar years and that means last modified date of pretty much anything. Right? If you have done some sort of activity on that order within the last two calendar years, it's common. It, it's gonna come over into the new system. Okay? So. Anything that you haven't done some sort of activity on in the last two calendar years. It will not be in the user interface, but again, from the, what we talked about earlier. It will be in the data warehouse. So you can still get to it. Alright, so that's requisition and you'll notice we shift to order here and they're, they're tied very closely together, guys. Alright, now I'll go to this page. So receipts, um. Receipts are interesting here. Once they're processed, submitted. They're good, they're not necessarily, we'll have a record. Of them, but any composing receipts, no, cause you, you haven't taken any action. This is a weird one, submitted in process receipts. It's not something we really do. In our environment, it, it, it just doesn't exist. You either do the receipt or you don't. Right? In our system, so those aren't coming, but we felt like we had to outline it. Um, any approved final receipts, so any historical. You know, so if you have an order and you've been receiving on it for several weeks or several months and it's still active and you still got receiving to do, that's all coming over. You're gonna have that and then that'll allow you. To jump into the new system and you'll do the receiving in the new system if you need to close that order out. So. Really cool thing, if you're thinking about conversion. Is I don't have to worry necessarily about closing out a bunch of orders before we convert, right? If that order is active and I've been messing with it within the last two calendar years and doing receiving and change orders or whatever I'm doing. It's coming over. And you can just, you'll get to keep working on it. You'll, you'll get to keep having activity on it. So it's not like. Luckily, I'm not sitting here telling you, well, you better close all your orders out. You know, you're gonna start fresh. I think it's a really good news thing, really good news thing on some of the things that are converted. Here's one area. I, I do wanna touch on, let me get it down here. Sorry, I don't wanna make everybody dizzy and I'll, I'll just leave it here. On, on quick quote, right? And this is where we have a little bit of a nuance. So. The quick quote module as it exists today. Much like what I talked about earlier with VBO buyer and, and, uh, the, the non-registered suppliers. We just don't have. Any, it, it's, it's not a one-to-one move for us, that, that, that module, there's not a separate quick quote module when we move. So, quick quote's gonna be available. Right up until about fifteen days before the cut over date. We're gonna let you do quick quotes, cause we know they can be fast. But quick quote is really being incorporated as I, as I, I've mentioned and talked about into the sourcing tool. It's a fully integrated tool. You are going to have quick quote functionality in that tool, but it's, it's incorporated. It's not, it doesn't look different. It's not a separate tool. This module in and of itself, how it operates today is, is gone, right? So we're really not converting any quick quotes. Now you'll have again, all the stuff in the data warehouse, all your historical things. You know, all your purchase orders, if they're still active, you know, if you've awarded a quick quote and it's become a PO and you're still working on it. That PO will still be there, so, so don't worry about that, but the quick quote request itself. There's a lot of no's here. Alright, a lot of no's and quick quote. Alright, we're just, we're just not converting the quick quote request itself. So we're really asking you. To wrap those quick quotes up. And to, uh, get those completed about three weeks before we convert. Alright, let's just get everything wrapped up and put to bed. Okay, wrapped up and put to bed. Now, there'll be some good news things, both in our quick quote. Module and in the sourcing and contracting module and in the VBO buyer module, we, we have this sheet for you to reference. We are also gonna, we are working, uh, very diligently and we hope we can get this done to put some warning messages and some informational messages. Directly into the tools, you know, to kind of track the date, so you know about, about the things we're, we're doing to you here. Alright, so moving right along. Talking about sourcing and contracting, that, this one right here, composing. You know, sourcing a country during composing, i- if, if it's still in composing come the cut over date, it's, it's gone. You're gonna, you know, you're gonna have to. We're not moving anything that's composing, uh, into the new system. So you really, uh. You know, really advise, get those suckers going. Uh, uh, if you, if you need to complete the procurement, really advise to do that thirty days beforehand, so you can get that either procurement. Uh, on the street or, or get it completely closed out, but again, composing's not coming, but some other things are. I talked about this earlier, I won't stay on this. I talked about electronic responses. But, uh, if you're using sourcing and contracting and you just have to get something on the street and it's open for bidding, we're converting those for you, okay? Same thing, if you've got a solicitation and it's out there, um, and it's closed. And you haven't made a decision yet, we're gonna convert that too. Alright, and you could, uh, you know. Kind of the idea here is if we have paper responses, you can convert into the no system and, and load the paper responses right into the new system. Alright, so if you're just not ready to get the evaluation and award done, it's holidays, whatever it is. Good news, it's common if you're sourcing and contracting. Some other things, emergency sole source, gov to gov, those aren't converting. Um, again, a lot of times you guys are posting this for informational, you're not doing a lot of changes to those. I will also tell you. And I need to make this clear, the public posting site will still have those things up there, right? So, so where our supplier community is going, where our general public is going, those solicitations. Those statuses that, those kind of historical business opportunities are still gonna be on the public posting site. I am talking very specifically about you as an end user and your impacts here. Okay, so just to be clear, we've already talked about VBO buyer, but there it is, we're closing it out. Alright, we're closing it out there. Um, there are some things in sourcing and contracting, some postal word documents. I'll get through those. Contracts, active contracts, they're converting. We've been talking to a lot of you guys about that who have been, uh, transitioning into our existing contract system. One of the things we hung out there is do it now, cause we'll convert your contracts for you, what we are. Um, active contracts will convert and you'll notice we're not real big on drafts. You know, if you got a draft contract, you haven't submitted it. We're not, you know, get it submitted, get it finalized, get it active. And that's true, think about everything we have outside of quick quote again, which is just kinda going away, um. Existing quicker going away, there will be quick quote functionality in the new system to be clear. Um, but again, anything that's draft, we're kind of like, we, you know, we can't convert draft stuff, guys. You know, let's get it, before we head into that date, let's get things either removed or just get them, you know, submitted. Get them processing so that we know what to do with them. Um, going through contracts again, any contracts that have expired. And there's no more renewals, they're just, they're not coming. Uh, again, you'll have all that historical data, uh, in the Eva data warehouse. Uh, expenditure reporting, which not a lot of usage on that yet, but it's in there, subcontractor payment reporting. Um, it's available in the data warehouse, we're not moving that stuff over. Uh, for those of you that are using those, you'll have that same capability in the new system. It's just the historical stuff is just gonna be in the data warehouse. You'll get to, you can report on it and do all the things you've done in the past. Um, it's just, we're not gonna convert any of that existing data into the user interface. Uh, and then we do have some. Performance measures in our existing system, it's not heavily used, just not converting that stuff either. Some supplier things, let's talk about supplier, active suppliers are converting. Active but haven't taken action in a while, they're converting, um. Deactive suppliers, quite honestly, also converting. The only one that has an exception is we do have, uh, a status where we set. Suppliers to this delete status, it's usually duplicates or where an error has been made. Um, we're not gonna convert those, but in the grand scheme of things for you guys as end users. We're converting pretty much all our supplier data. Um, pending suppliers that are awaiting approval. We're missing something in their registration. Usually those things get cleaned up really, really quickly. Uh, our vendor support manager, Lakeo White is very aware of this. Um, but sometimes we get a supplier that registers with us and they just don't complete the process. You know, we're waiting on a W nine, we need a tax ID update, whatever it is, we're not gonna convert pending suppliers. What do they need to do? If they need to come back to us, they'll register in the new system and, and rekey their registration. We personally. You may feel differently, but my opinion and, and a lot of us on this side, registration's not that difficult. Um, it's, you know, it's kind of a one pager. Um, you know, you go through, put in some contact information and hit submit. Get your data in, we do an approval and we can activate you. So that's happening depending. Then I talked about ad hocks, we got the ad hocks in there. Okay? Buyer. And this is buyer user, right? Pretty simple, active, active, but with multiple accounts. Um, we're, we're converting, right? We're converting everything. The custodial account piece, um. You know, I, there's, I've talked about this in some earlier user groups, there's some really, really great. Uh, workload management. Reassignment of work tools in the new system that are gonna make this wonderful, you know, where you can take a. Transactions and completely reassign them to users within your organization. So a much better approach to this, but. Long story short, we're converting, converting and even deactive buyers, we're converting, cause what if they have a deactive buyer? Still has an open transaction tied to them. Well, we're gonna move that over, convert them and then we can use our workload management tools to, to move those, uh. To move those transactions around the system. Alright, and then I've shifted into reference data here. I think there's a line, sorry, I had a bad pa, page break there. But you got a page break where I actually start to go into reference data. I think this is all good news stuff for you. Uh, addresses, chart of accounts, P card, uh, workflow, all converting. And the only thing we're asking is to really, I talked about this earlier, let's try to minimize our updates. And, and try to limit our updates, December first going forward. The only thing and I, we marked it as not converting. And don't panic. Catalogues aren't technically being converted. We're taking our catalogs and we're, and we're pointing them to a new environment, right? So it's really a reload. Into the new environment, not a conversion. So don't panic. We're gonna move those catalogs, they're coming with us. Um, it's just that it's not technically a conversion. Um, from that perspective, so we, we have that in there. So I have done a lot of talking. Uh, and I thank you for hanging in there. I see some questions going into the Q and A. I'm gonna stop sharing. We're gonna move into the Q and A portion here and I appreciate you guys hanging in with me. It's a lot of information. I know maybe a lot of new things you heard today. So I'll, I'll let you digest that. I haven't seen a single question yet since I've been talking, so I will let Kim and company take it away.
Alright, thank you so much Shane. And we have again, a lot of questions. Some of these may have been answered as we continued through the information that was shared. But we will definitely verbalize these answers again, just to make sure that everybody's hearing the same information. And as we all know, we need to hear it like multiple times. Um, sometimes we just like need a gut check. Did you just say that? I wanna hear you say it again. So, let's just dive right in. We've got about twenty minutes and we should be able to roll through these. So with the removal, with the removal of, of being with, with ad hoc, you know, being removed. Well, Eva be changing their current process in which if a vendor is discontinued. Bad address or non-payment status and an entity attempts to state enter the same vendor. The state entered record is denied and put into denied status for both current Eva and the new Eva. So that was kind of a, a, a fully loaded question there from Dean.
Yeah, I mean, I, 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 I think we've got to look at that process. Um, you know, certainly this is a change, um, from that perspective. We quite honestly are just coming to terms with. You know, cutting off non-registered ad hoc supplier as well. I'll be quite honest with you, our own agency is guilty of this. Um, and, and following this process, I think those are all things we need to look at and determine. We wanna make it as painless as possible. We wanna talk through business processes with you. We have some entities out in our community that went through this process and completely. In the current environment, changed their business practices and have a method that they went about. You know, pretty much removing non-registered vendors from how they do business. We wanna be able to follow that. Uh, I think some of this, like I mentioned, is shame on us. Um, you know, that. From a system perspective, from a data integrity's perspective, that we, we didn't. Do this sooner, but we are now kind of in a situation where we're moving to a tool that that's, that is the standard. You know, for this toolset.
So what should Dean do next? Should he reach out to his account executive? What would be the steps for trying to ensure business practices for anyone that's interested in needing to change their process?
Start with your account exec. I know in, in the. If we're talking about Dean and James Madison, that Sharita Bryant, uh, is very, um, engaged with them. She's very aware of this situation from their perspective, um, and, and that is absolutely where we need to start.
Alright, and then Lisa to comment.
Something, yeah, something independently that.
Yeah, something independently that agencies can do. You know, whenever we see these types of questions come up is there's a 215 report and the report and resource center, and that report is super awesome because what it does is it pulls all of those unregistered vendors. And if your supplier is registered, but your buyers are just being lazy, like I used to be guilty in the field doing ad hoc suppliers, it'll match things up if they actually put in a legitimate tax ID. So that way you can say, maybe put, talk about some sign of rules or something you can do now, so that way you can catch them and get them corrected. Because sometimes it is just a matter, I've looked at the data. I polled one agency for three months and found 25% of their records actually are registered in Eva and they're just not coming forward. Now, if it's a bad address situation, that's something that you can help us with. You're obviously doing a financial transaction and that supplier wants your money. Get their address and get that up to customer care and to our vendor support team. So we can update our records and we can make them active again too. So there is a little bit that you can do on your end too. And I will say, just running that report and looking up suppliers, like I found even more where people just put, put in like nines as the tax ID. But that supplier is actually registered with Eva too. It's just some of our end users, and that's my dog Foxy joining us, are definitely, you know, not putting in those. So it's something that we need to work with. And, you know, as far as the other statuses and things, we definitely hear that and we'll work with our billing team and look at that process and, and see what we can do too.
Yep. And then I see your comment, Dean, in the chat. And again, we're just gonna, you know, said, say, definitely have to look at those business practices and see where your account executive can help kind of fill the gap and, you know, shore those things up when there's issues with bad address and they have fees that they owe and no longer want to be registered and those types of scenarios because we know that that's not going to go away. So great question. Lots of conversation around that. So let's shift gears. The next question, what will happen with the VBO? Tongue twister, buyer postings that are still open or closed, but not awarded by December 1st? I know we answered that Darren, the information segment that stated again.
So we really want you, the, the concept of December 1st is to try to the best of your ability. We're saying by December 1st closed, you need to be, it, we don't want anything to be open by December 1st through that tool. That is kind of the goal and the target we're setting for ourselves.
So that was like Catherine.
We had a little, I'll be quite honest with you, I'll call him by name because he's a panelist down here. Mark Orlando was throwing out some ideas about maybe allowing a little nuance there. I don't want to completely throw Mark under the bus because we kind of want to hold firm. There may be some options there. As we sit here today, we would really like the December 1st date for VBO buyers, let's finish them up.
Okay.
And if you go, I have to get something issued in December, well, then let's talk about sourcing and contracting for doing that. That's kind of the, where, because remember I just showed you sourcing and contracting, those will convert. You know, you can have an open solicitation in that tool and we're going to bring it over for you. So that, that's kind of where we're tracking. And I know that puts a large burden, not only on you as a procurement professional, but also on probably our account execs if they need to help you through and my own team to help you through that. But that's why we're throwing those dates out now so that hopefully you're looking at this in August and seeing that date and being able to plan accordingly.
Yep. So that kind of piggybacks against another question. It was that with VBO buyer going away December 1st, you're saying that those of us using it will not be able to post any solicitation, award or addendum from December 1st through the new implementation. And that answers that, I think explicitly of get it wrapped up, get it done, and then sourcing and contracting will be the tool that will be able to support you after December 1st. Okay, so just hear that.
Yeah, for 30 days and then everybody who
Will be in the new platform.
The sourcing role, whatever it is, if it's VBO buyer, or if you're already in sourcing and contracting, well, then those users will have access to sourcing in the new environment.
That's right.
And it's a fully integrated tool that includes quick quotes and, and everything's going to be in this sourcing. Mark, if, go back and watch, if you didn't, the live demo, he popped, he was in sourcing, he just did a quick quote. He popped in there. Well, he showed quick quote, you can do an IFB and RFP out of that same environment, you know, and so, but everybody's going to be in there. Everybody's going to be in there.
So with the deactivation of VBO, will past solicitations be saved? In other words, will we be able to access our long list of past data? So everything's being collected in the data warehouse. So the answer is yes, data warehouse, data warehouse, data warehouse.
And I want to be clear, your public posting is still going to be sitting out there too.
Right.
So you could go back and check out the public posting and any attachments you publicly posted are all going to be there. And then in order to really dig into it, you need to shift over into the data warehouse side, run some reports, you can pull up the solicitations, the SWAM stats. You know, things like that will be available from a reporting perspective.
So great question, shifting into quick quote. Are you saying that quick quote responses can only be paper? So when you were talking about the cut over and the blackout and they can only
No, no, no. So the, so the, the responses we're concerned about are, are the sealed. Because I got to break a sealed response. And that, that's, that's, that's bad, right? Because it puts the procurement at risk. What we're saying with quick quote is we're giving you a little bit more time to use quick quote and do electronic right up until the, we're saying about 15 days out, you need to have all your quick quotes wrapped up. And you can do electronic responses and, and all that stuff and get it awarded. But you need, it need, the full cycle needs to be completed, issued, closed, evaluated and awarded. Because quick quote, we're not converting anything from existing quick quoted in the new environment. But we're giving you a little bit more time to use quick quote.
And, and that's where the, the next segment of questions came from Shane, and I don't know if you can see those or not, if you have them pulled up, but it's, it's basically the same. So somewhere in the information that we shared, we'll just say it again, that quick quote, you have longer, you, to, to use the tool that you, your businesses can continue to respond, that the November 1st date of pausing electronic responses is associated with, is not associated with quick quote, correct?
That is not associated with quick quote, correct? And I'm sorry if that wasn't clear, and that's a great question.
How long will they have to have quick quote responses continue to be submitted until the blackout date, correct?
Well, so we're telling, we're telling you 15 day, but we're telling you, don't, don't let it go that far. So we're kind of saying, we're kind of like, hey, we're, we're putting in some dates to give you a buffer like about two, three weeks before we're cutting over. Let's, let's finish all those babies up.
Yeah, you want to be finished with your, you want to have your quick quote, Shane just said it, you want to have your quick quote completely finished and awarded. Because if you are still in evaluation stage with your quick quote and we go to blackout and cut over, you're going to lose that information. You're going to have to restart your quick quote. Okay, so you want to be issued, votes received, awarded, evaluated, awarded and, and over to PO. Before we cut over.
Yes.
And remind them what that cut over date is again, because people need to hear it again.
December 30th, the weekend of December 31st.
So we're basically saying by the beginning of December, you guys get your quick quotes wrapped up. For systems that integrate whole receipt into from Eva, will the new system push the old receipt numbers? So it will, so it will find a match. Will other information being pushed and pulled into financial systems besides Cardinal use the old set of receipt and contract numbers?
Yes.
Thank you, John. See, that is exactly why John was here.
Yeah, we're working with Maria pretty much every day, going through everything and making sure that you guys know exactly what the data is so that when we're going through, we're passing you the old data. So that you guys don't have to make a change on your side.
Ebony said, pray, praise baby Jesus. That was, that was literally in the chat. So you can, you can see that. Um, with the existing PR and EPs are converted, will they retain their current RE and EP prefixes or will the, will they be converted to the new prefixes?
I can answer that one. They will be converted to the new prefix. But we are going to retain that old information as part of the conversion. We'll have that field avail, or that information available.
And we'll actually be able to search on it, right?
Yep.
So if you saw that really super cool robust search that we've talked about several times in the new platform, if you're like, I don't know the new REQ number or the new PO number, the way that this, the new platform's going to kind of index that for you, it's, it becomes a keyword and you can hit it. You know, you can search for that old EP or PR or PCO. So good stuff.
Nice. All right. Once the new platform is live, will the, will there be some type of purge timeframe where after X number of years, historical data in the system will be moved over to the data warehouse? Asking since all information will not be converted and that historical data we have now will go to the data warehouse.
Well, let, let me be clear, the data warehouse updates three, four times a day. When, right now, when transactions hit certain steady states, when they hit certain, like when they go to order, when they go to received, when an action's taken, the data warehouse is, is dynamic. That's the word I'm looking for. It's constantly updating itself. So we're telling you from a data warehouse perspective, we, and for analytical purposes and all that data is still there in the data warehouse. So it, so it remains. Now for the application database, for those of you that have lived with us for a while, and those of you that had Eva logins, maybe at the same entity for a long, long time. You know that in the application where you actually are keying and doing your work, we had orders going back to 2001. And we, I'm shaking your head. And we, we've recently gone through, uh, over the last couple of years and done a lot of purging. I would imagine, although Lori has turned off her camera, because this is Lori's area of, of expertise. I would imagine we will, for the application data, will probably institute a more regular cleanup of the application data. And again, everything will be in the data warehouse, a, as always. I mean, that, that, that's not changing how we update the data warehouse.
So I think there was some confusion with the answer that was provided. So the follow-up is the entire PO and PR number will change, not just the prefix?
Yes. So
Sorry, I'm having technical difficulty. So I think that was to me, that.
But I mean, we can answer it in general, but I, I think the idea is for things that are converting is the PO and PR number. The entire number is going to change to a new number and, and not retain the old number. Is that correct?
Oh, we didn't hear you, John.
Yes, it's going to be a whole new unique ID and then we'll just map to the old one. So it'll be a whole new numbering system. It's not going to take rec 12345 and make it REQ 12345. It's going to be a whole new unique identifier.
But to be clear, for converted transactions, the historical number will be available for you. So you can see it and you can search on it. And then eventually think about time here, we're going to convert a certain set of transactions. And as you, your users, use the new system, those old transactions will move out and we'll just have our new numbering scheme. I mean, that's, you know, you'll, you'll start new business and you'll do new POs and new, and, and slowly over the months and years, those converted transactions will, will get behind us.
All right, great. So will there be a separate session to talk with integration agencies?
Yes.
All right, great.
Absolutely.
TBD, we will be, stay posted for that.
And the only reason we've had a little, I know there's been some outreach from Maria and Joel Pato's team. There's still very much a lot of work going on there. I, I don't know that they're quite ready to talk yet, but I promise you that's coming and outreach and communication and is coming for you guys that integrate and interface.
So one of the questions is, could you provide a chronic, chronological listing of the last dates for quote unquote events for us? And so that's part of the information, Lynn, that's been shared. And you can absolutely scoot through the playback of this and go to their specific particulars. And then there's also the document that we're going to share out that Shane shared, you know, the details of. So that's part of, it, it's part of it in there, isn't it Shane?
Yes, and I saw some things kind of flying. We are posting on the Eva transition website, this recorded presentation. Eventually, it takes us a while because some, you guys asked some good questions and we got to answer. It takes us, you know, we got to maybe do some research and answer the questions, but we will have a specific conversion FAQ and that roadmap that I just went through, that will be posted there as well for your reference. And we'll even make sure, because that roadmap might update as we learn things, as you give us information that might change a decision we've made. I'll make sure there's a last updated date, right where you can see it. So you know, oh my gosh, well, I checked this in August and I see that it got updated in September. I better look at it again. So those, those things will be available for you on the transition newsroom.
All right, we've got a couple more minutes. Let's see if we can jump through a couple of things. Um, is the pause on users starting 12/1, any changes at all or just adding new users? Will this include deactivations and custodial changes?
So you kind of throw that date up there. I know the folks that, you know, on the CGS side that are doing the conversion for us, the less changes that are made, the less difficult it is to actually perform the conversion. We would absolutely love for everything to pause on December 1st and to have no changes. But we also understand for security purposes, if you have somebody depart your organization on December 15th, you're going to want to deactivate their account, right? You know, we know there's, you know, there's some things that like we have to do because it wouldn't hold up to us. That's the big one, right? That wouldn't hold up to a security audit. Well, you just left people active because you were, no, we, you know, we understand there's some things that need to be done. But we're kind of setting that as a target date. And so I say firmer words like no changes after December 1st. Minimize changes, you know, we don't, how about this? We don't want you coming and saying, hey, we want to redo our workflow. And on like, you know, right after the Thanksgiving holiday, let's spend a couple of weeks working on our workflow. We're going to be like, no, let's not. You know, let's, you know, let's take a break and see if we can get through this. We also, I brought up the example. We also know sometimes you guys like grants like spin up like out of nowhere. I got to place this order, I got to tie it to this grant. All right. Let's get it in, let's do it. You know, we understand that are caveats to that. We're just trying our best to try to minimize those changes.
And, and will there be cleanup of vendors with multiple accounts?
That is in process, yes.
Great. And will PO categories and transaction codes be required in the new system, new platform? If so, will Eva provide more detailed descriptions?
Uh, sure. Uh, that's a great, we can work on that. And actually, I think that's a good thing to get in an FAQ. We can do that right now to give you a little bit more detail about what all that means.
And if explaining the data conversion process, do we have a finalized date for training our end users? We have a concern that most of our end users take vacation around final examinations, which is the 15th through the 3rd, December through January, uh, at the new year. So you know, they won't be available.
So training isn't going away. It'll be available through January 3rd. And guys, the training program's not going anywhere. It's going to be available forever and ever. Amen. This is the way we want to do training for a while. So if you've got somebody that's coming back after the New Year's, they didn't get the training, they can take the training when they come back in 2022 and get trained, okay? Training's not going away. It's not transition training, it's Eva training, period. So we will support that.
Yep, and it's, it'll be available in the learning management system, modules that you, only the things that you need to do your jobs will be available to you. It's self-paced, you know, so.
And I also suggest that everybody go on vacation from December 15th to January 3rd. I agree. Everybody go on vacation from December. No, not you, John. Everybody else. From everybody except DGSDPS and CGI, go on vacation December 15th to January 3rd.
Conversion problem solved.
No, I, so all training is not going to be self-training through the site, Susan. That just kind of got typed in and answered and we're, and there's going to be instructor led, there's going to be module, micro learning, there's a, an array of training and training is beginning. And then the additional training plans for individuals will kick off depending on your entity and how you typically are trained.
The buyer user group meeting we did last week on Thursday has a nice description of that. There's also some back sheets and some information coming out really, really soon about the training program, if, if you need some more detail. about the training program, if, if you need some more detail. So again, that buyer user group meeting is great. We talked about training in that one, and then some back sheets coming out to, to kind of give you guys an idea about that. Distribute them far and wide as you start receiving.
That's right, and so we're going to go ahead and wrap up today's meeting, we have about three lingering questions, but we make, we will make sure to get them into the conversion specific FAQ document that will be posted on the transaction, transaction, listen, I can't speak today. Transition newsroom, there is also the next bug meeting scheduled for September the 16th, but potentially we will have additional ones that will pop up and we will have more than one for September. As always, if you have somebody in your organization that needs to get on that buyer user group invitation list to register for the buyer user group meeting, I think we're going to send it out directly to our user group, but because we have people that are making the request, I think we're going to maybe push that we're going to have that registration link on our website. And I just have to kind of get internal buy-in, that's a good move to put that out public. So that's going to be something else where we can push people to the transition newsroom to register it, so they can get the meeting credentials for our future meetings. And we will add that enhancement, so definitely lots of great information shared today. Thank you CGI, thank you our PCR team, and thank you our Eva team for all joining and sharing the great information and presenting today. And with that, I'm going to call this one a wrap and we will see you again very soon. Visit transition newsroom for the FAQ documents, they'll get posted next week and we will be in touch. Have a great day, y'all.